I will call the meeting to order. We have the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the roll call, please.
Mr. Stambaugh.
Here.
Mr. Seaward. Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Ms. Dixon. Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
And Mr. Ruffin.
Here.
Are there any items that we need to add or delete from our agenda? If not, we will follow the agenda that's been distributed to us. We have the minutes from our May the 10th meeting. Any additions or corrections that needs to be made to those minutes?
Sir, I make a motion we approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, we don't have anyone here, so no one signed up to speak, citizens. And we also don't have any public hearings for this meeting tonight. We do have some items to be brought up to date on or to discuss. These will be on our agenda for the July meeting. The first two are special use permits for short-term rental properties. One at 111 Baker Drive and the other at 172 College Drive. Any questions or discussion on those two at this time?
I've read over them and I feel like they're similar things that have come before us before.
I put them together because I thought we've...
Yeah.
Gone down this way, gone down this way before. Okay. But is there anything else on those two?
Just the one thing that nothing was signed on the second application is that...
It came in online.
It came in online?
Yes, sir.
I just wondered about that.
But there has been email correspondence with them that resulted in the plan, the management plan submission.
Okay, the next one then that will come up next month is the special use permit for a childcare facility at 201 East Main. And this is in the business district. And we know that this location is where the daycare was operated at St. Mark's Lutheran Church for a number of years. And there's quite a bit of information that's been presented, answers to some questions.
I was interested and happy to see that the traffic plan for parent pickup and drop-off is down that alley because that's not the way it was when I took my kids to St. Mark's. And it's a lot better to have them go behind, I think, than the way we did it.
It is good that they've planned some of that. One concern that staff does have is that they're anticipating 75 students, which...
That's a lot of traffic for that little alley.
Lot of, lot of traffic for that site, for the street and for the alley. And the required staffing for 75 students, there isn't sufficient onsite parking for that. So that is one concern that staff have about this application is there... It's wonderful that they have aspirations of 75 students. It's just, there are some concerns, both parking and traffic, associated with that.
Those were my concerns too.
Well, the, the space... The spaces that they used to use, which on the planet look like the same rooms. I don't know where they would put 75 students. If they're all there at the same time, but when my kids went, they had a morning program and an afternoon program. And so all of the students were not there at the same time. But it didn't read, it didn't read like that.
No, my understanding is that it's intended to be an all-day with some after-school children being dropped off, so it, there are concerns.
My, my concerns weren't so much with, with the building and the spaces. Because I was thinking that would be addressed by the building officials and Department of Social Services.
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal, Health Department, all of those.
And then Department of Ed.
All of those agencies will see that the regulations are being met. But I, I did wonder about outside the building. That alley, I haven't been through there.
I've never been through there. In fact, I didn't, I didn't really know it existed, to be honest.
Me neither. It's small.
Yeah. I, I was through there a few years ago, a number of times, because I had a friend that lived right there. It's an unimproved alley. And only room for one car, wide enough for one car to go through there. And if I'm remembering correctly, the entrance at the back of the building there is through the kitchen. I don't remember another door in that big, open space.
That makes sense.
The only entrance that I know of back there again is, is through the kitchen. I'm sure there's some steps back there to get up to the kitchen and then through the kitchen into the rest of the building. So that, that would be my concern. And then they say that the number of full-time positions would be 25 to 30. Precious little parking.
Precious parking.
On D Ford Avenue, it might be three or four spaces. And then across the street, you've got a very busy dental office. You've got the funeral home that regularly has services at 11 o'clock in the morning or 2 o'clock in the afternoon or any other times, but...
The only thing that helped me there was with the shared hours. Maybe it wasn't 25 people at once, but maybe they were sharing shifts or something like that.
Well, that's what I thought too, but then she, but then she said 25 full-time physicians, not people. And that, because I went back to it and was like, was that what she means?
Good question, good, good comment.
I didn't, I wasn't sure either.
And it also says that they went by the advice and recommendation from St. Mark's when they had their childcare facility. Barbie can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that was a much smaller number of students there, or children there.
Well, there were two. It's been a long time ago. I mean, the student that I took there just had a baby, so. But there were two workers that I recall. And like I said, they had a morning program and an afternoon program. They, they were half-day programs because I had to figure out how to get out of school to get them to the babysitter. But I can't speak to how many students they had in each program. I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think it would have been 30. I know the Department of Ed has regulations on how many adults you have to have with so many kids, but I don't know what that number is.
I, I don't either, but it is a concern that... Again, it's an absolutely needed service in, in Luray, but I'm not sure that this site has... Is the perfect location for that volume of, of students.
Well, and, and the students that are going to be needing the level of care that a lot of these students will have. So one of the questions, I, I've never been down the alley, so I wanted to go down the alley to see. But if it's only room for one car, some of these students are handicapped and they're going to have to be transported by a bus or vans that have lifts. And if the, I don't... I thought it was dead. I don't know if, if the entrance down there is handicap accessible to the back.
I, I never have gone in that way.
I didn't know the alley went all the way through.
I didn't, I didn't know it was back there.
I thought it ended.
Yeah, I, I never went, it was, it goes all the way over to that southern states where...
Yeah, it goes, yeah, from D Ford to Williams, yes.
Yes, it, it, but...
Yes.
It's not maintained.
Also, they're talking about overflow with parking, talking about overflow parking, arranging with Bradleys if there's a family event. But the problem is, they won't know until two to three days prior whether that's going to be used or not. Obviously, the, the events, the Christmas program's going to be scheduled two months in advance. So it just depends on, that's in the community and whether or not that's going to be available. So that really is almost like, you can't, you can't even consider that to be parking at all.
Is there a restriction on parking on Main Street for a business or employees?
There, there's areas that are denoted by the yellow paint due to site distance, but I don't believe we have... I don't, I don't recall if there's a four-hour parking limit on, on any location on Main Street.
I think there is.
I don't think there is.
Out there, I don't remember it being there.
Wouldn't it be ideal if this type of service was out just a little bit further at the Dollar General Building? Where you've got plenty of parking for staff and that, that would be ideal. And it's, it's all on one level. Because, because this, this building, you've got steps at the front of the building to go downstairs. And then you've probably got steps at the back to get into the kitchen.
Well, there's, from the front, there's steps that go upstairs to the classrooms.
Right, and then downstairs too. And no elevator.
Nope.
And, and part of the reason that this application is before the planning commission and council, this is a private venture, it is not affiliated with the, the church. So that is why the, that there is a requirement for the special use permit as a, as a private business.
Would it be appropriate to have more information from the folks that are listed on the application that are affiliated with the church? I mean, I recognize those names, all those people would be able to answer our questions. I mean, any of those people would be able to answer all of our questions.
That's part of this discussion tonight is for the planning commission to identify concerns and questions and we can notify the applicant and the property owner and see what kind of response we can get. The, the, the public hearing would be scheduled for your July meeting and hopefully we will have answers to any and all questions that y'all might have.
With questions on access, would that be addressed through the Department of Education?
Should be. I would think so. Especially if, if they're, if they're going to be enrolling students with special needs. I, I would think so. But I've never been part of those processes, so I don't know. I've never seen the application, but I can't imagine that they would not, that, that they wouldn't have that as be part of it.
Well, if, if anything, I, I know when my kids were at a daycare and my wife was helping with it, the, the concern wasn't so much access in, but fire escape and being able to get all of the, the children safely out of the building was the, the fire marshal and, and more of the, more of the, the primary concern. Getting in was, was...
Right. And so the other thing that has changed there since my kids were there is that they built that, they built that playground, that play area that is in the rear of the building between Jackie Cane's house and the church. That wasn't there when my kids went there. So I don't know what door they go out to get to that playground area.
There, there could be.
I don't know.
Maybe I, I don't remember, but I just don't remember any other access.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't have that when my kids went there. That wasn't a thing.
Well, what I can do is, if, if the commission desires, I can pose questions to all of them regarding typical daily parking, typical daily drop-off. Ask them if they can get, provide some photos for how the, the students would be arriving through the alley and what type of access is available, again, through some photos if they can provide, provide them to us.
They want to do a walkthrough.
That would be if y'all would want...
Yeah, I, yeah, it would be good.
Okay. I'll see if they can schedule that for you.
A lot of moving parts that we're talking about.
Is, is there any time better than, than not for all of y'all to try and schedule a walkthrough?
Random from evening.
It's random.
Yeah, just, just schedule it and...
Schedule 20 minutes, we'll just be there.
Morning, afternoon, evening? Any, any preference? Okay, we'll, we'll see what's available. Or any other items that we should ask about?
I have one more question about it. Do, do we know, does anybody know how long it's been since St. Mark's stopped having preschool there? Does anybody know?
It must not have been too long ago. I had never heard that they'd stopped.
Recently, I've seen people getting out of cars and going out there.
I think they probably stopped during the pandemic and then they never started back. That's, that's my guess.
So pretty recently.
Like I say, I think, I think that's probably what happened, that they just had to stop during the pandemic.
So, yeah, so there... So all of the current licensing requirements would have, they would have had to satisfy those.
With this application, they will have to meet?
No, I mean, the St. Mark's.
It was like five years ago and then, you know.
I mean, they, they haven't changed the regulations. They're probably all the same.
Again, I don't know, I, I do know that there were some, not necessarily exemptions, but for church-related daycare versus private daycare. So I, I, I don't know what the differences would be.
I, I don't know if you can exempt ADA. Do you think you can?
Sometimes the cave can.
Think you can?
Yeah.
The cave can because we're a natural structure, you might be able to...
Depending on the age of the structure and, and that's... The amount of work that needs to be done. Yeah.
Okay.
There, there's, there's some things, but there's, again, I would have to defer and I can, I can inquire to the building official if they've done an inspection to see if it meets all of the, their requirements.
Because I know a lot of those codes, you're sort of grandfathered until there's a change of use. And if there's a change of use, then everything has to be code to the current code.
But I can ask the, the building official to provide us any information?
But I, one of those names on that list, like, he knows. He knows, he should know the codes, he should know the access, he should know the egress. He should know all of, he can answer all of our questions, I feel sure. And I, I don't, I don't know if, I mean, you, you think that somebody has anticipated all of the questions when they fill out an application, but lots of times things get addressed and they've decided how they're going to meet certain requirements and they've not included it in the application. So they could have ways to address all of those things that didn't make it into the application.
If you come up, I, I'll copy y'all on the, the, the notice to the church and, and Ms. Smith. And if you have anything else that you want to add, feel free.
Okay.
Other discussion at this time? Okay, our last item then in this section is to look at the proposed code amendment to Section 516, dealing with accessory dwelling structures. I know we've looked at this before and we have the proposed new, new language in RED.
And then what, what the commission had discussed at the previous meeting was changing the name to accessory dwelling structures at the request of the county. Item K requiring that each structure have an independent address. And there was...
For 911.
Correct. Those were the primary changes, but again, if there's any other concerns or thoughts from the commission about how we can better set this up to accommodate potential additional residential use of, of properties.
The only thing I thought of is that over the years, we've been, the ones that have been here on the commission have been very protective of the R1 and R2, especially R1, that it's a single-family dwelling. So I don't know if there's any other concern about possibly changing that now, including R1 and R2, to have another dwelling structure on the same lot.
That's definitely, again, this is for the commission to craft and recommend to council.
I think that's a good point, Rodney.
So the, in R1, they can only, the way this reads, they can only do it if they have an existing structure. They cannot build one now. So that would be converting a detached garage.
I might be inclined to add R2 to that.
To the item D?
Other discussion at this time?
So then, so then we're saying that, I'm just trying to understand, I have to repeat things back, that R1 and R2 would only be if they have existing structures that are detached, that they would be converting. And then if they have, if they're in R3 or R4, they can build a structure, provided it meets all the setbacks and all that stuff.
As, as drafted, yes ma'am.
And B1.
Yes ma'am. Actually, in B1, if you're using a residential use, that actually already requires a special use permit. So I think that if you were to want to add a new ADS to the, the property, that would still fall under the special use permit if you had not already obtained one for residential use within the business district.
So, so will we head right back here?
Yes, sir. That they wanted to put a, a new residence in, in the business district. And, and the intent is that in the business district, that the town would like to focus commercial uses, but can recognize that there is a need for residential in certain circumstances and that's why it falls under the special use permit.
So mixed use in B1 would be special use permit?
Mixed use is, is allowed by right.
Okay.
But if you were to build specifically, like what happened here behind Town Hall, they built a specific unit that would solely be used for residential use. That, because it wasn't a mixed-use new structure, fell under the special use permit requirement.
I understand. And the, and the purpose that, I mean, I, I came in on the tail end of this discussion, but the purpose of writing this, rewriting this, updating this is to alleviate the lack of housing?
It's to allow for an expansion of housing stock that can be made available for long-term rental or additional family use. Again, cutting off, not, not intended for short-term rentals, but if you have a, a detached garage that could be used as a, as a, as a rental unit for either your family or for a long-term rental, council thought it might be worth investigating. Is this something that we want to expand and, and, and consider in the town? Because right now it is very restrictive to structures that were constructed prior to...
Decent move of 31st and...
2008, in a very limited, I think it's, it is only in the R2, R3 district. So it's, it's, it's very limited right now. And what we're seeing throughout Virginia is an expansion that's kind of demonstrated by the, that a number of communities are recognizing that there is prob, there is a need for expanding the housing stock available to families and, and, and long-term rental. So that's one option that is... So, that's one option that is available.
So, with the discussion that we've had here tonight, we would actually be making our current code be more restrictive if we move R two into that group with R one, because now they can do it by special use permit? Is that what you just said?
No, in the R two district, right now, the only, uh, you have to have a building that's built before two thousand eight. If we, if we continue to have R two included in this, it would then be, you know, before, uh, twenty twenty-two. So, if, if there had been a, any new construction in that time period, it would then qualify.
I misunderstood what you said.
The special use is only in the business district.
I, I only remember two of these, um, I think on North Court Street and off of Sixth Street.
Yes, there, there's, again, it, it is relatively restrictive in how it's currently written, and that is part of the reason council wanted to have the planning commission look at it and evaluate it.
There's one on South Court Street.
Okay.
Must have been there for a long time.
Has been, has been there for a long time. Very long time.
And if it, if, if it was in place before seventy-six, then it would have predated our, our zoning, so it could be grandfathered. That, that I don't know.
Well, I know it was being rented in nineteen eighty-four. Um, uh, nineteen eighty-six. It was being rented in nineteen eighty-six by a non-family member of the owner of the property. And that's what we're talking about, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, there might be a couple sprinkled around.
There probably is.
Yeah, we don't know. And so, and so that brings me to another question that I have that's somewhat related to this, but not entirely related to this. Who, uh, who enforces these things?
Short-term rentals?
Short-term rentals, yes. Or, or, or this, I mean, I mean, I know that we have this written down that they, they can't do it, but like, how, if they do it, how do we know, and what do we do about it?
If a complaint comes in that someone is doing a use that is non-conforming, either short-term rental or, um, converted a garage into a, a, a dwelling unit, we rely on residents to let us know. With regard to the short-term rentals, uh, we are able to go on the various websites that advertise them, and we, and we have staff that does that periodically. The county also has software that, uh, they're able to track short-term rentals, and they do let the town know, and we have identified a handful of, of.
So, it's like a matching software with addresses or something like that?
Honestly, it's interesting, the software that the county has access to is a pool, and I, I don't know exactly how it works, but all of the companies that offer short-term rentals online report to someone who then sells this information to localities, and then we have to go weed through all of the information that they provide and see if, if there has been either a business license or a special use permit for short-term rental at that, that address. And occasionally, we'll have issues with someone that converted, uh, a garage or some other structure, and they have a sewer backup or some other utility in there, and they happen to call us, and we're able to go out and say,
Oh, I know.
it's not supposed to be there. So, uh, I, I don't know that we've actually had that occur, but that, that is one way that we would find out. Or, we just have neighbors that are complaining about somebody's living in, in a garage, making noise at all hours of the evening, and that's when our police department becomes aware of that, and we, we would then pursue a zoning violation.
I just, I can, I feel like the volume of those types of situations is going to be increasing. I was just curious about how we go about enforcing them.
Well, the, the good news is, is that we have a very good working relationship with the building official and the, the county planning department, so that if anyone were to come in and get a, apply for a building permit for some type of conversion, which they should anyway. They don't always, but they should, that, then they, the, the, we have been made aware, and likewise, if we get a, a zoning request, we always provide the county with a copy of that, so that they're aware that someone is looking to do something, so that they know to follow up and.
So, there's, there's systems in place to catch those things?
There's internal communication to, to try and, and, and identify any issues, yes, ma'am.
I was thinking that too, that, um, that if someone is, um, doing construction, or they're gonna need to, uh, have additional electricity hooked up, or if they're trying to make a water or sewer connection, there should be some, some procedure along the way that's gonna catch those, those type of things being done.
We hope that it happens, and.
Well, I, I mean, yes, you're exactly right, but lots of people have water and sewer in their garages. Anyway, when they build them, they, they.
So, back to the R one and R two discussion.
If the purpose is to expand, I, I feel kind of weird about making one group more restrictive. So, I, I agree with you.
I, I, it's up to the, the commission how, how you want, if you want to leave item D just limited to the R one, or R one and R two?
So, can you give me a, an example? I'm still learning.
Okay.
Can you give me an example of a place that would be R one versus a place that would be R two? Like, what's the difference? R one is single-family dwelling, so what is the difference with R two?
R two is a medium density, so I believe you go from having a minimum ten thousand square foot lot to a minimum seven thousand square foot lot, I believe, I think.
In R one, fifteen thousand?
Oh, okay.
And R two is two.
And, and R two is ten, thank you.
So, they're both single-family dwellings, it's the size of the lot that is the difference?
Correct, it, it's, it allows for a denser community.
More houses in one place, gotcha.
And I believe the setbacks are similar in R one and R two, it's only when you get into R three that they, there's a, a, a reduction in the, the sides and, and, and rear yard. And then in R four, there's a reduction in the front yard.
So, subdivisions, some of the subdivisions that we have, those are R two?
I, R two is primarily Court Street, um, R one is.
Spring Street?
Yeah.
All around there.
Yeah.
My parents' house.
And then, I'm, I'm struggling to think of other R two areas in town. The front portion of Arthur Lane off of Reservoir, that is R two. The rear was brought in as R, or just recently rezoned as R three, so the first twelve lots along Arthur Lane are R two. And I apologize, I, I just, off the top of my head, I can't think of.
That's out past the store, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Other discussion at this time? Are we ready to have a proposal for a public hearing next month, or do we want to look at it again next month?
Do we, do we normally get, uh, lots of public hearing folks show up for things like this?
Potentially. Probably the most interaction that we've had have been, uh, on Luray Avenue when we had a, uh, special use permit for a, uh, short-term rental. That drew in quite a number of the, the, the residents. Usually on code amendments, unless there's a specific segment of the community that's impacted.
Signs.
Signs, yes.
Parking.
Yeah. But I'm, I have, I, I really couldn't gauge how much interest there would be. I, I, I would reckon, I would anticipate that because this is an expansion of use, I don't know that there would be a lot of citizen in, in, input, but I could be wrong.
Well, I ask, I just think, I mean, I would be fine with letting it go to public hearing as it's written.
Okay.
Um, and then see if we have any comments from anybody, either people that come or people that email in. We can always go back and discuss and change it after the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we send it to council, correct? And there's no time limit on how long we have, after we have a public hearing, that we have to act on it?
Well, if, if there's a significant change to the code after the public hearing,
Then let's go back to public.
We would probably have another, uh, uh, just to be safe, yes, ma'am. And again, no, there is no, council did not put a, any sort of time constraint, the, the, the intent is, is that for the commission to be comfortable with any sort of change that, that you would refer back to council for consideration.
Well, because we have two commissioners that aren't here tonight, I, I would feel kind of weird about changing, making a big change before we send it to public hearing.
I, I, and, and again, if you want, we can bring this back for discussion in July, and then have your public hearing in August, or we could do a public hearing in July.
It would, it would be better to have as, as many here
Okay.
as possible.
And then we'll just bring this back in July for continued discussion, and then I'll have a, a discussion of whether R one or two for item D.
Is that agreeable to have it back on here for discussion in July?
We already have three public hearings for, for July.
Yeah. Steve, any other updates?
Well, uh, at your seats, there is a copy of a proposed subdivision, single-family dwelling subdivision associated with the Luray Landing, uh, development, planned neighborhood development. This is the, uh, the lots that are just south of the existing West Loop subdivision and north of the new Luray Meadows apartments. This area was included in the, uh, planned neighborhood development for single-family homes. This is a preliminary sketch. We anticipate receiving the formal preliminary and final plat submission for the planning commission's review either in July or, or August, but we wanted to, to give you all an, an, an idea of what was coming as far as the, the single-family homes in that neighborhood.
How big is that area?
Oh, size-wise? I believe it's ten acres, in that, in that order of magnitude.
That would be run by the same people?
My understanding, it's, it is currently owned by Baker Development, they are talking with a different developer than the townhomes for the single-family homes.
So, would that also be a planned neighborhood?
It is part of the, the master planned neighborhood, they, they've reserved a section for single-family homes and a section for the townhomes. So, the, the, the concept plan did have this included as single-family homes. So, but it was not specified to the number, the, the density of, of, uh, the, the number of dwellings that would be proposed. But it is, this appears consistent with the number of homes that could be constructed in, in that area.
So, because it's part of the same development, even though if it was a different developer that is gonna be building it out, is subject to the same allowances, that they could be sold as short-term rentals, as single-family houses? Because it's part of the same planned neighborhood thing?
That, uh, is, uh, is a good question, and it hasn't been posed to, with it being a different one, potentially, they could, um, but it would still require a special use permit issued through the town. But I can ask about their, their intent, and if they want to put any covenants on that.
So, what, what, um, what's the word I want, Brian? What, what, do we have any say-so about that? Do we, I mean, do we have any?
Um, I will check on that as well. Uh, again, short-term rentals were not specifically excluded in the development plan with that subdivision. So, I don't know that we have a lot of ability to regulate it, but I will check with the town attorney.
So, this will come back to us in July?
Presumably, I, I don't know what their schedule to, to prepare and submit the, the preliminary, final, uh, plans, but it, 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 we anticipate it coming back to you soon.
Discretion is the word I was looking for. What discretion do we have to put limitations on that? That, that was the word I was looking for.
And that I will have to check, because the way that the town's zoning for planned neighborhoods is, is set up, the developer comes in and does a general plan for their development, and then they submit a developer's plan for that development that the town approves at the time of the acceptance of the planned neighborhood development. So, that's where I need to check and see where short-term rentals, because they were not truly contemplated at the time in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when this development was approved, so I don't know how, how much control or discretion we have.
It's twenty-six houses.
But under what criteria that we have used in the past, would we use to deny that?
I don't know, I wasn't here in the past, that's why I keep asking all these questions, because I'm trying to understand.
And this is honestly our first planned neighborhood development that, that the town has seen come to fruition. So, that.
But I mean, if it, if it, not just with this, but like, the whole process of a special use permit means that at some point, somebody might say no. That's why you have to ask. In terms of what criteria it is, I don't know what criteria we have, I'm, I don't.
Well, and, and the developer, uh, there is an HOA associated with the, the townhomes. There most likely will be an HOA associated with this development, and that's, I, I will ask the, 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 the developer if they do plan to have any sort of HOA restrictions on short-term rentals, because that, that could el, eliminate it as a, a future issue that the town does not even have to be involved with.
Other questions or discussion on this? Other items that we need to be brought up today, Don?
Actually, well, we've had the grand opening of the, the new Domino's, we are having the grand opening of the Farmer's Market this Saturday. Everyone's invited out to, to the, the visitor center. We are glad that, uh, there's Daughters of the Stars Farmer's Market is, will be operating the Farmer's Market there, so we're glad to have a Farmer's Market, uh, back in town, I believe it is twice a month, might just be once a month, I think it's twice a month. we're glad to have a farmer's market back in town, I believe it is twice a month, might just be once a month, I think it's twice a month.
Do you know that hours by chance?
The grand opening is at eleven, I believe, and
It's okay, I'll, I'll look it up, I just was curious, if it's all day or if it's just part of the day?
Ten to two, nine to two. Something like that, there was a little card that they had dropped off at the last meeting, and but I, I don't know offhand, but
We have people that come in the shop and ask us things like that, I just don't know what to tell them.
Yeah, I, I, I think it is something like ten to, to two, ten to three.
There is a card here, but it doesn't have the hours.
Ah, okay.
Just, um, June seventeenth, July fifteenth, looks like it's once a month.
Once a month, okay.
August nineteenth, September. Doesn't have the hours.
It's good to see some activity on the Browns building and
Oh, yes.
I saw somebody backed up to the Chapman House today, looked like they were doing some construction on one end of it.
It's my understanding that they, they hope to have the Chapman House fully operational by the fall. I've not heard a schedule on, on the Browns, but it was, it was wonderful to see them actually working on the facade, that's
At least the public knows something's happening.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
And then Fourth of July Downtown Get Down is coming up on Tuesday, and as part of that, LDI will be having a, a, a old car, antique car cruise in on Main Street, so it's always a, a great, great event here in Luray for the Fourth, and Park Department has events from five till nine, the car show's supposed to go from one to five, so a full day of, of activity in, in downtown Luray. And next Friday is the second of the evenings on Main over at Ruffner, and it would be the Kent County, I apologize, I don't remember the name of the band off the top of my head, but seven o'clock at Ruffner next Friday.
Steve and I attended a Airbnb's little get-together on Saturdays, that was, that was interesting.
I, I didn't know that they were, there was a, a group like that, but
Me either, and I walked in, I was like, I thought there'd be like four people there, and there was a ton of people there.
It, it was the gentleman that had
Steve Whedon, who has the Airbnb on High Street on Main Street, has, has
Apparently, they have a group of, of investors that they, they meet regularly with to discuss short-term rental opportunities and, and issues, and they did speak very highly of, of Luray as both a, a destination, and they were complimentary of the planning commission, the, the process that Mr. Whedon went through.
Good to educate them and kind of see that there was interest, a lot of interest in, in the town and the county, and it was good.
It was.
A lot of young people went to invest, so it's good.
I, I kept looking here and I thought something didn't add up, this, this is from twenty twenty-one.
That's an old, that's old.
I was, I was looking at the dates, you know, those upcoming things you were talking about, and I thought, well,
Throw that away.
It was just, it was there.
Well, maybe Jerry's a couple years behind.
It's always good to look in the past.
So it just didn't add up, and I thought, well, wait a minute. It's in right. Okay, anything else that we need to discuss at this time? Okay, don't hear anybody. Next meeting then is July the twelfth. And I, I double-checked to make sure this was a
It's not the right one.
It's July the twelfth. So if there's nothing else, then we will stand adjourned.